Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March Board of Education meeting. Can everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please take a seat. Okay. Now we'll have Ms. Heather Hall, who will recognize the Regeneron Science Talent Search Scholars. And this year, we have four in Sayaseh, and many of us already met them in the hallway. It just sounds absolutely amazing. So, Ms. Hall, it's all yours.
Evening, thank you for having me. I'd like to start by thanking the board, the administration, the teachers, and the community for their continued support of our research program. This year, our research program submitted 27 projects to the Regeneron Science Talent Search. It is my honor and pleasure to be here tonight with four of our outstanding research students who are recognized by the Science Talent Search. This program has been supporting high school research since 1942 and is one of the nation's oldest science fairs. The students here tonight were selected among the top 300 high school research students in the country in a year of record-breaking number of applications. Each student will present a brief summary of their project for you tonight. Our first student is Griffin Han. He was recognized as an STS scholar, but he is currently competing in a testing event for Health Occupation Students of America Future Health Professionals Competition. Ms. was unable to be here tonight, but in lieu of being here in person, he's recorded a presentation for me to share with you.
Hi, my name is Griffin Han. I'm a student at Sayaseh High School, and I studied a potential dietary solution to intestinal bowel disease. One of the major problems with intestinal bowel disease is the destruction and debilitation of crucial intestinal stem cells, causing a plethora of problems for gut healing. Recently, certain dietary compounds have been found to boost stem cell activity, and I want to see if this phenomenon could be utilized for intestinal bowel disease treatment. So, I studied the effects of two dietary compounds, arachidonic acid and prostaglandin E2, on the intestinal tract. And I found that both significantly upregulated genes associated with wound healing and metabolism, showing that stem cell activity was enhanced. Prostaglandin E2 in particular had an especially interesting result. It seemed to revert mature cells back into stem cells, effectively reversing the cellular aging process within the intestine. If further studied, this could be a breakthrough for regenerative medicine. Overall, my work shows that both compounds are promising solutions for intestinal bowel disease treatment and prevention. Importantly, both of these compounds are found in really high levels in none other than chicken and eggs. Now, I'm no dietitian, but take this as you will. Thank you so much for this opportunity to let me present my work, and thank you for listening. Hi, my name is Griffin Han. I'm a student at Sayaseh-
Okay, our next STS scholar is Alex Chen.
Hello, my name is Alex Chen, and my research investigated the effects of spearmint oil on Alzheimer's disease. I chose to research on spearmint oil because Alzheimer's disease is a condition that affects people all over the world, and treatments to these conditions need to not only be effective, but also accessible to a large amount of people. I conducted this research at Sayaseh High School under the Advanced Research Program. I explored the effects of spearmint oil on a model organism called T. elegans, which is a good model for human aging, and it is also a type of roundworm. I found that when these worms were treated with spearmint oil, they showed lower levels of aging, and I also identified a signaling pathway in the cells in which spearmint oil acted on in order to provide these potential health benefits. I also found that when worms were exposed to spearmint oil after eight days, they were more resistant to toxicity induced by amyloid B protein, which is a hallmark of Alzheimer's disease. My research shows that firstly, spearmint oil is a good candidate for further research regarding aging-related conditions, especially regarding Alzheimer's disease, and it also provides more information on how spearmint oil may act within humans, which is crucial for its clinical applications. Perhaps in the future, when looking for treatments to aging-related conditions, we can turn towards the farm instead of the pharmacy. Thank you.
Our next STS scholar, who's going to present to you in person, is Ariyan Shah.
Hi, my name is Ariyan Shah, and my project concerned gerrymandering, which is a method of drawing congressional districts in order to benefit one political party or group, and how that impacts representation of constituents across in districts around the U.S. So, my study concerned the two different types of gerrymandering and how those each impacted representation when compared to each other. I studied packing and cracking. Packing being when members of the minority party in a state are all put into one district so that the majority party can win all of the surrounding districts. And cracking is essentially the opposite. It's where members of the minority party are spread out across multiple districts around the state so that the majority party can win all or most of the districts in the state. And gerrymandering is a very big problem that has been present basically since the founding of the U.S., and it's been extremely contentious in the Supreme Court with cases like Baker v. Carr, Shah v. Reno, and recently, Allen v. Milligan, which is currently still being debated over racial packing in Alabama. So now, in my study specifically, I studied 40 congressional districts from around the U.S., 20 of which were packed and 20 of which were cracked, and how each of those impacted representation. I did that by analyzing approval rating data from 2010 and 2012, 2010 being before new maps were implemented and 2012 being after, and found that with packed districts, there was generally an increase in approval ratings, which I tied to representation. Whereas for cracked districts, there was the opposite. There was a decrease in representation, which means that although gerrymandering is generally recognized as something that is negative and has net-negative consequences on the U.S. political system because of the decrease in political efficacy that it causes, it's still being used extremely widely by politicians in both parties around the country, and it has been allowed by the Supreme Court on multiple occasions in a political sense. This study provides a unique data on how one type of gerrymandering, packing, may potentially be better than cracking, which is the other type of gerrymandering. Thank you.
Our final student tonight is Vincent Wong. Vincent is currently in Washington, D.C. at the STS finals. He was recognized as one of the top 40 research students in the nation and has spent the last few days competing and sharing his work with experts, politicians, journalists, and the community with the opportunity to win up to $250,000 that is going to be awarded at a black tie gala tomorrow evening. You can actually livestream it on their website if you would like to check it out. But before he left, Vincent recorded a video for us to share a little bit about what he did.
Hi, I'm Vincent Wong, a senior here at Sayaseh High School, and this is my Regeneron STS project, where I developed a computer program, computer application, to interpret the crystal diffraction patterns of X-rays for crystal identity and crystal orientation, which can then be used for things like computer chip manufacturing. Basically, when you take an X-ray beam and fire it into a crystal, the internal structure will diffract in all directions, creating a lawy pattern. And using my program, you can interpret and analyze this pattern as well as simulate exactly what it should be and what it should look like using the basic mathematical principles of geometry, where each plane then refracts a beam in a certain direction, and it's repeated for each individual plane in the internal structure, creating a full pattern. Based on this pattern, you can then derive, for example, the orientation identity of a crystal. So, for example, if we wanted to verify if a diamond ring was actually a diamond, you could theoretically do this, as well as identifying the orientation of the internal structure, which is how chips are made, because they're not cut along the physical surface, or rather, along their internal structure, which could also potentially be a major breakthrough in chip manufacturing as well as semiconductor research. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for allowing us to have the time to share this with you tonight. And if you'd like to hear more from our research students, you can join us at our research symposium on May 28th at the high school. Thank you.
General semifinalists and finalists. And your remarkable accomplishment exemplifies dedication and excellence in scientific explorations. And best of luck to Vincent tomorrow. We hope that he takes a top 10. Thank you. And those two seniors who are sitting in the audience, we do understand that you have school tomorrow, so if you want to make a graceful exit, now will be the time. And we are going to continue with our budget information, and we will have Dr. Ruffo to give the presentation. Thank you, and thanks again, congratulations.
Good evening, and welcome to our second budget presentation for the '24-'25 school year. Last month, we met, I went over the capital and the admin components of the budget, and we took, I guess, a very quick look at state aid, the governor's proposal. Tonight, we're going to take a preliminary look at benefits and, again, a quick look at revenue. We don't have a lot to update in terms of the state, but we do have some other information to provide in relative to reserves and potential reserve use. And then we'll go through the program and the instructional codes. So, at last week's meeting, I'm sorry, last month's meeting, we went through the budget goals, which obviously are overarching goal, and particularly in tough years like this year and next year, is to preserve our existing programs and services for kids and to expand opportunities where we can while we're managing all of the inflationary pressures. We began several years ago supplementing our staff that provides social and emotional well-being for our students, and we'll continue that in the '24-'25 school year. And we'll go over in the program section what specific areas and services that relates to. We plan to maintain our aging facilities, both in large-scale capital work and in the smaller-scale projects that we talked about at last month's meeting. And we always want to provide, maintain our fiscal stability. It helps us to be more agile and better react to changes in our fiscal environment, our enrollment, our growing enrollment environment. We went over some of the budget challenges that we're having or the overall climate that's really led by changes and increases in benefits, which we'll talk about tonight, both health insurance, increases in pension costs in both ERS and TRS, and then our enrollment growth, our continuing enrollment growth. So, we submitted our preliminary tax cap to the OSC controller, and that's 3.23. And I went through the details of that calculation last month. And overall, over the last, I guess, since the inception of the tax cap, we've been under the cap by about 11 million. And you can see that depicted in the chart on the right-hand side, where you can see the calculated cap, and then the red-orange color is where we came in. And while in the, I guess, the last five years, you see a lot of space in between our calculated cap and where we've been able to bring our levy, actual levy in, we can also see that last year and likely this year, it will be very difficult to have a space between our levy cap and our actual levy. Again, the inflationary pressures, the enrollment growth, make that a challenge. And when we also think about the CPI and where CPI is, both in terms of the state, we got a little bit into the executive budget proposal, how they're currently using a 3.8% CPI. The controller posted a 4% CPI, over 4%, and yet our expenses are capped at the 2% level. So, the benefits are preliminary. At this point, we're just engaging, well underway in our staffing meeting, but just engaging a lot of the staffing numbers. And obviously, benefits are related to staffing. And additionally, you may recall that when we present our final budget, we're required by the state to allocate benefits across all of the different components, three components of the budget. But I'd like for you to see them all together because it just helps give an indication, even if it's preliminary, where we're ending up. And you can see that benefits alone result in about a $6.3 million increase to the budget, over 9%, driven primarily by health insurance, which is, I guess, the third from the bottom, the $4.2 million or 10% increase. And you may recall that last year, we had, it was a difficult budget year. We had, I believe, we had an 11% increase in for our health insurance, and it turned out that health insurance came in at 15%. This year, we have a little bit of savings. We came in, we're forecasting to be under the budget a bit, and for next year, we have a 10% increase in the budget. And you can see the chart at the bottom, which the blue line is the premium increases for family over the last several years. And you can see there's been quite a variance, which certainly makes it difficult to budget. So, right now, we're going with a 10% increase, and that's the resulting $4.2 million increase in that line item. The first two codes at the top, state retirement and teacher's retirement, those together are about a $1.3 million increase. And we, I guess, over the past seven, eight years, maybe 10 years, we've been using our reserves to help offset benefit costs. And so, down at the bottom, you can see, in the box on the left, you can see the reserves that we've been using, or at least that we use for '23 and '24, $5.8 million. And we're projecting or proposing for '24-'25, based on where we are. And that full amount of that $1.3 million increase is to cover the increase in TRS and in ERS. And that's really essentially what your reserves are there for. They're there to cushion the tax levy from changes and increases in expenses. So, that's a proposed increase. And you can see that the percentage change in ERS is about 24% increase, and TRS is 4.34% increase. And those are the districts' contributions that we're required to make to those pension systems. Down at the bottom part is what I presented last month, and our foundation aid is about 220,000 less due to changes in the foundation aid formula and a change to CPI. That's part of the calculation. Since that time, the board has advocated through a letter to legislators, a restoration of the aid along with advocacy groups. The state budget deadline is March 31st. We're not anticipating, based on what we've been reading and information that's been coming out, that we will have an on-time budget from the state. So, that will also be a challenge to move forward with potentially preliminary numbers from the state. So, before we get into the program section, just while we have a lot of uncertainty and we're still working on the numbers, our goal is to sort of address the gaps that we're seeing, both from the revenue side, looking of where we can find additional revenue, as well as the expenditure side, going through the different codes that we presented, both on the admin and the operations side, to try to find efficiencies to look at those. And when we look back at the projects that we have in the budget, can we phase those and make some reductions? So, it will continue to look at those line items. So, the program section of the budget makes up about three-quarters of the operating budget of the school districts. It's comprised of all of those different areas that are on the right. And overall, the program section shows an increase of about $4.6 million or 3%. At this time, the staffing, we could say that staffing is a rollover. We're projecting the current staff that we have now rolling that in, and that's what's responsible for or the increase, and that's what's been factored in. So, I want to go through those areas that have a more material increase or a material change, up or down. The program codes on this summary page are the high level, and then we'll go through a couple of the details. The first is 2110. 2110 at $88 million is the largest code in the district's budget. It accounts for about one-third of the district's budget in total. And the increase that you're seeing of about $2.7 million or 3% is largely the result of contractual salary adjustments as well as changes, among other codes, including BOSI Services. BOSI Services, which is probably fifth or sixth from the bottom, you see an increase of $36,000. And that's where we pay for things like outdoor ed, arts and education, those types of programs. So, some of it is increased usage, and some of it, we can anticipate increase in BOSI's costs as they have similar benefits increases as school districts do. Special education, $2250, is increasing by $517,000 or 1.6%. Again, this is all pretty much the result of staffing adjustments, which are based on IEPs as well as all of the tuition costs. These are preliminary as they're having their annual reviews and meetings. So, we'll be returning to this section when we come together again in April. And right now, the values are based on current placements. Summer school provides remediation enrichment as well as extended-year program. And you can see that that reflects a decrease of about $108,000 or 20%. And if you look to the right, you can see the expenditure trend from 1920 on. And so, the decrease reflects really what we've closer, spending that's more closely aligned with our program for the summer of '23. And you can also see that we're kind of moving back to the pre-COVID program level. Library media, so all of the instructional media for district students are captured within this code. So, librarians, library books, periodicals, audiovisual materials are all contained in here. And you can see there's 161 bottom-line K increase, or about 5.6%. And that's, again, due to salary adjustments as well as a bit of increased overtime for the media specialists who assist with live streaming and other events. We also, in this current year, added some additional support to the middle school libraries to assist with maker spaces, with some of the broadcast programs, and also to assist the kids with Chromebook repair and maintenance. Instructional technologies increasing by about 238 or 5%. And that's largely a result of projects that we're planning on doing with BOSI's. We have our Chromebooks for our incoming kindergarten. We have new IMAX or a planning for new IMAX for the fine arts and the technology classes, and those two images are digital images. We have, you may recall, we started our SmartBond last year, and we're going to continue that. We've made progress this year and plan to, I think we're about 78% done with the installation of the interactive boards. And I spoke about, while it's not included in this code, it does impact our instructional technology, and that is the Wi-Fi project through BOSI's. And I just remind you that all of these projects that we're doing through BOSI's do have the aid component that we will receive in the subsequent year. So, one of our goals that we talked about in the beginning was our overarching goal of supporting the social and emotional well-being of our students and that those services and those people focused on that are included among these codes. And so, you can see that we have an increase in guidance of about $319,000 or 9%. And that's the result of an additional guidance counselor at the high school that was added in the current year. The increase of 105K or 4% in psych services reflects an increase of 0.5 FTE also in the current year to provide additional social and emotional support for our students. We spoke about the inclusion of the Northwell Health Consortium, and that was part of a presentation last month as well. And so, there's an allocation to continue that into next year as well. And then our social worker code reflects on the right, five social workers, but we know that we have several more that are charged to our grants and that we have a social worker starting this year, one in each school. Health services includes all of the salaries of our registered nurses or contracted services, and the increase is related to the additional one nurse that we hired in the current year to help cover absences and to cover lunches of existing nurses. Co-curricular contains expenses for the district clubs, including the three new clubs that we added this year, the Korean Language and Culture Club, HOSA, and the physics clubs. And you can see that there's a bottom-line increase of about 15%. And that relates to the first couple of lines that have to do with salaries for advisors, chaperones, and there's also travel costs. A lot of our competition clubs are very successful, and they're growing, and they are becoming more successful, which means they advance to more competitions, and that incurs costs. So, that's responsible for a lot of the increase here. Athletics also has an increase of about 6.7%. And again, that is related in part to the success of our teams and extended season and adjustments for coaches' stipends. Additionally, you'll see the equipment line has also increased. There's an allocation in next year's budget for wrestling mats, a new requirement for lacrosse shot clocks, replacement goalposts for lacrosse and soccer, and some protective netting for the lacrosse and soccer field, as well as backboards and replacement showcase. Transportation. Transportation, specifically contracted transportation, appears flat from budget to budget, but that doesn't mean that there isn't an increase in that code. As you may recall, our transportation contracts are tied to May CPI. So, when we projected costs for transportation for this year, we did it back when the CPI was pretty high at 6%. So, CPI actually wound up, May CPI- was pretty high at 6%. So CPI actually wound up, um, May CPI was 3.5%. So we took our actuals and forecasted another about three, kind of where CPI is, uh, now, and came up with a number that really lets us keep transportation flat. Um, hopefully CPI will hold over the next month or two, and we can hold that number. To the left, it gives you an indication of sort of the complications and the extent of the transportation services in the district. Just, um, how many buses we have. We start at 6:00 AM in the morning. Our last bus is at 6:00 PM. And so all of that is our contracted So April 16th, we'll be coming back to you, um, with adjustments to some of the codes that we, um, have already presented. Hopefully, a, uh, firmer, firmer number on the state budget, and then, um, some more information on planned use of reserves.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ruffo, for that comprehensive, um, presentation. Um, I just want to make a comment that, um, I know every year, um, especially this year with the state aid being cut, um, it's really not easy to come up with a budget, and especially, um, now after the presentation, knowing that none of the programs for the kids is being cut. And I just want to commend you, administration, and of course, Dr. Rogers, for working so diligently and so hard, um, preserving all programs for our students. So thank you so much. Thank you. And with that, um, anyone with, uh, have question, anyone have questions for Dr. Ruffo, uh, Mr. Greco?
Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. Um, one point about ERS and TRS, you mentioned that it was going up by 1.3 million, and you also mentioned that the use of the restricted reserves are going up by the exact same, 1.3 million, correct?
I'm proposing to, uh, to use the reserves to offset that, yes.
Okay. Um, one of the other points you made about the tech updates in BOSI's, it was about $238,000. You mentioned that, uh, a portion of that would be Chromebooks and IMAX. Um, it, it's, it's all reimbursable from the state, including the purchase of that equipment?
Yes. That's all part of the BOSI's, um, BOSI's aid, yes.
I had a few things, I'm sorry. Oh, summer school. Uh, you mentioned, uh, the, what looks like a substantial decrease in the budget amount for summer school this year, and you talked about how it's going back to pre-COVID levels. I mean, Dr. Rogers, this may, may be more for you. Is that because you're seeing less of a need for summer school since COVID because of parent interest, or less of a need for summer school, um, for students in general?
I would just clarify one, it is actually an increase over where we were this past summer, 20, um, summer of 2023. It's not presented there because it's a 2023 actual, but the, what we're forecasting for summer of '24 is an increase over what we did in summer of 2023.
So you did, so you budgeted high last year, expecting more enrollment?
Yes.
Okay, understood. Um, that's it for now. Thank you.
With the proposed drawdowns in the ERS/TRS reserves, what would the balances that you're projecting be at the end of the year based on that? Approximately, like, the, of the balances, are we drawing down 20% and half of it?
I would, less than 20%.
Less than 20%? And for both of them?
Yes, because I'm also, I believe that we'll be replenishing as well.
Mr. Greco?
You mentioned, uh, the letter that we sent to legislators regarding foundation aid. Um, Dr. Rogers, did we get a response, other than a, "Thank you for sending a letter"?
We did get an acknowledgement. Um, Senator Martin sent, uh, email communication back to me, had some suggestions for, shared with us some of the things that they're doing to, uh, advance their advocacy in the legislature, things that he was doing. So I did get a response from his office. I also know, um, that a meeting was held with a number, the superintendent's conference was last weekend in Albany, and so a lot of superintendents went up and met with a number of elected officials. So, uh, that was commented on there. At the end of this week, Friday, there's also going to be a rally outside the, um, I believe, uh, the Legislative Office Building in Hop Dog, uh, in the morning for, uh, state aid restorations. And, uh, at the conference, the Commissioner of Education referenced the progress in the state budget process. I was going to refer to this in my superintendent's report, but this is a, a more apt time. The, the way the process works in Albany is, um, the governor proposes a budget, then the legislature works on, uh, their own, what are called one-house budgets. So the Assembly will put together a budget that illustrates their priorities. The Senate will put together a budget that illustrates its priorities. And then they'll do conference committees where committees of staff from the Senate Assembly and governor's, uh, office will work on each of the topic content areas, so education, transportation, the environment, uh, criminal justice, et cetera. So the two one-house budgets are anticipated to come out this week. Uh, typically, there are three session days in a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So I anticipate that we'll see a one-house budget report from, uh, the Senate and Assembly before the end of the week this week. Um, from a sense of how their rules work perspective, that's important, because if it appears in either of the one-house budgets, then it's fair game for negotiation. If it doesn't appear in either of the one-house budgets, then you assume that it's, it's not going to make it into the final product. So I think we'll get a good sense of where the two houses' priorities are, uh, for restoration. So, um, I had the opportunity to, uh, see some former colleagues, uh, from the legislature who still work in Albany in, in and around state government. And they shared that the state has, um, recast its revenue forecasts, and now is projecting $1.4 billion more in revenue. So that means that the legislature has additional money to use for restorations, and that the, um, the big picture question will be, um, just as it is in our budget, uh, how much of the new revenue will be allocated to healthcare spending, and how much of it will be allocated to education spending. So those will be the two, uh, big priorities. So we'll have a sense of where each of the two houses, uh, where their priorities are in terms of how they allocate that 1.4 billion, and then we'll have a sense of how much might be restored to, uh, education budget. So I, even though we won't have a final answer this week, I, I do think that, um, we'll, we'll see more of the table in terms of what to anticipate. And then, as Dr. Ruffo alluded to, um, it's helpful for our planning, for your planning, if the state budget is on time, because if the state budget is done by April 1st, and you adopt a budget in April, then we'll be able to factor in the exact dollar amount from state aid. Uh, if the budget is late, uh, which used to be typical in the, uh, early and late 90s, uh, then we will have to make a guess at what we think those restorations will be, and hope that our guess is accurate in order for you to adopt a budget on time.
Ms. Abramsen?
Just to follow up on that, is there anything, we sent a letter, and I hear about the rally, but there's anything else we can do to advocate?
Yeah, I think, um, certainly sending more letters or emails, uh, to our legislators. Senator, um, Martins and Assemblyman Blumekrant's, uh, can't hurt, and it's important for this to remain top of mind for them. Uh, my state association has been interacting with this, particularly with the Senate Education Chair, Shelley Mayer, who is from Westchester. Uh, her, um, email communications to her constituents, uh, have been full-throated defenses of restorations to the state budget. And, uh, both of the leaders of the Senate and Assembly have been saying publicly that it's a high priority for them to do restoration. So I think that the windows are back in terms of, uh, not having to convince the legislature, but I think we're sort of competing for the allocation of resource with healthcare spending. So the more, um, we can continue to encourage them to keep education a priority, the better we'll do in, uh, that allocation.
So to follow up on Ms. Abramsen, yes. To the extent it wasn't clear when we asked you to send the letter, absolutely follow up if you think it has, not going to ask you to go to the rally, but follow up if you can to make sure they know, um, our position on this as often as possible. And, and, uh, Dr. Ruffo, I should say, I, I ask a lot of very narrow questions. I don't want that to, to take away from the fact that I appreciate what you've put together. I know this year must have been, or is, a, a very difficult budget year, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Mr. Ostrick?
Just, just two more quick questions for me, Dr. Ruffo. The 9060 hospital medical dental insurance, is that strictly premium, premium payments, or is it other, uh, line item, parts of that line item?
There are other parts to the line item. There's certainly the premium payments. There's Medicare reimbursements that we are required, um, by law to, um, to provide. There are, uh, buybacks for those employees that don't, um, take the coverage. There's incentive for them to disincentive. Um, and those, those are the line items. But clearly, premiums are the, the largest component.
Can I just, one more. Thank you, Dr. Ruffo. I, I thought they were the vast majority, but I just wanted to verify my understanding. And then, the last thing I wanted to ask you is, um, between this presentation and the next one, the next forum, presentation? Forum? Is the next one a forum? Between the next, this meeting and the next, uh, what's the line items where we're potentially going to see significant deltas that we should keep an eye on, positive or negative, away from the state aid line?
We certainly, when, when, if we need to make reductions, I, we're going to be looking at, um, operational areas. Um, we'll be looking at, um, equipment. We'll be looking at, in addition to, um, or instead of reductions, sort of the strategy that we adopted last year, to look at what's being proposed and what's being asked for, and saying, well, can we phase it? Can we reduce it, rather than eliminate something and phase it over time? But those, those would be the areas that we would, um, that we're looking at.
Great. Thank you again, Dr. Ruffo. Okay. Next is the approval minutes of February 12, 2024 for education meeting. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitin. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and we will give Dr. Ruffo a minute to get back. And Dr. Ruffo, um, may we have the treasurer's report and appropriations adjustments, please?
The treasurer's report, in the treasurer's report, the cash on hand for the month-end January 2024 is 107,490,336 and 95 cents. It shows that bank balances for all cash accounts were reconciled, um, to the book balances, and were collateralized in accordance with the district's investment policy and banking agreements. Thank you.
Abstentions. And next will be, uh, Dr. Rogers' superintendent's report. Um, Dr. Rogers, owe yours.
So, uh, just to finalize the thoughts about the state budget and the reason why there's speculation it'll be late this year, uh, although there's, um, the state fiscal year runs April 1 to March 31st, uh, typically, the legislature works well when there are deadlines looming. And, uh, because of the way the two holidays fall this year, uh, Easter is a little early and falls, uh, the two days prior to March 31st will likely be holidays for the legislature. And so it's unlikely that they'll do the budget early in anticipation of finishing before those holidays. So once, uh, they've kind of gone over the line and sort of punctured the April 1st deadline, the next thing that looms as a potential, um, uh, deadline will be, uh, the break that happens at the end of April for Passover. So I think that it's, I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, the legislature will resolve things in the first week of April. Uh, but having watched them work, I think there's a possibility that without some sort of looming deadline, they may, um, you know, feel like they can push one more day, one more day, one more day. And then they'll, once they push up against a potential break, they'll feel the need to, to close things out before they leave. So that's not my hope. That is just, um, my observation of how the legislature has worked, and that is, um, again, talking to some former colleagues in Albany, that's kind of the sense up there. Um, it's March 11th, there's still the potential for things to move quickly, but, um, they're not as far along as I would hope they would be with just two weeks left in the budget process. Um, I did want to also comment on our Regeneron scholars, obviously incredibly proud of, uh, the four winners, and very hopeful for Vincent tomorrow night. But, um, my job is to evaluate programs, uh, for you, and the big win in this, for me, is that we have 27 competition-worthy projects. And, uh, when I arrived here almost 10 years ago, it would be typical for us to put in, let's say, 10, and to be very proud of those 10. So what we've been able to do over time is grow and expand the program, and more students are having access to very high-quality research opportunities. You've heard, uh, the quality of the projects that the students are working on, very high-level research. And all of those projects, whether they want or not, are at that same level. They were competition-worthy. So, uh, we've broadened the program out of just physical sciences into social sciences and math. That has given more students in different interests the opportunity to compete, and it's included more teachers in the program and made them part of the research program. And I, I'm just, I'm very proud of every one of the 27, uh, students, uh, that were engaged in this and took the time, uh, because all of these students worked tremendously hard to put together competition-worthy projects. And so I'm proud of all of them, and I think they should all be celebrated for their successes. Um, we're, uh, in the middle, uh, in that switching to, uh, universal pre-K. Uh, we, thank you, Board, last month, uh, identified the providers for the upcoming 24-25 school year. I had some questions about where we are process-wise. Uh, we will make allocations at an upcoming board meeting, the April board meeting, uh, once we have a sense of how many registrants we have. So right now, we're in the process of registering, uh, new students for the program. We know what our allocation of seats from the state is in the preliminary budget. Again, we won't know what the final allocation of seats will be until the state budget is officially adopted. So we're waiting for two pieces of information, the state budget and, uh, the number of registrations. Next thing I wanted to talk about just briefly is, as, uh, Dr. Ruffo is working on the budget, she's been working closely with Ms. Goldwight, as she mentioned, on, uh, structuring the special education program, making sure that we have the services that serve our students' needs. Uh, some of that has been, uh, ongoing work, because this is, um, the season where we do annual reviews of students' programs, so that we can make sure that the program that's in place for them, uh, next year meets their needs. And it's also an opportunity for us to, uh, look at the way we serve students and see if there are places where we can do it, uh, better for students or more efficiently for students. So, um, I think that we're going to, um, see some, uh, encouraging things that we'll be ready to talk about in a future meeting. But, uh, I did want to point out that that work is, uh, really thoughtful work, and it's ongoing. Uh, I've also gotten some questions about the solar eclipse. And, uh, if you've been seeing the news, you see that some, uh, school districts have chosen to close on the day of the solar eclipse. Uh, so typically, the places that have decided to close are further upstate. And, uh, what has been experienced in the past is that there are, um, tourists who will come to areas that are in the totality of the eclipse in order to see a totality. And so the worry in those districts is that, um, they will be so clogged, uh, with onlookers that it might not be safe to do transportation. I don't think that we'll have that problem here. And, uh, the very beginning of the eclipse is at 2:12, so the high school will essentially be, uh, through dismissal before there's really any, uh, change in, uh, the amount of illumination from the eclipse. For high school dismissal, it'll be a little bit more, a, a little bit darker, uh, for middle school. And for elementary school, we've, uh, purchased, uh, glasses, uh, protective glasses for, uh, young people to wear. And they're incorporating, first of all, the spaces in the first and fifth grade curriculum, so it dovetails nicely with what, uh, the students are already learning. But, uh, we've prepared a number of lessons and ideas for teachers to use with students to talk about what's going on, but then we also have the protective gear. But then we also have the protective gear to make sure that they can safely observe this since they'll still be in school. So we will not have a totality here, so there will still be ambient light. We think that it will be safe for us to do dismissal then. And actually kind of exciting to have our youngest kids here so that we can share this really magical phenomenon with them. So we, we do have plans. We've been working with the building principals, and we've shared some resources with the teachers. When we get a little closer to the date, we'll hand out the glasses. And that, for the elementary students and for the secondary students, standard advice always applies. Don't look into the sun. And then I, I just, I was appreciating the comment. One of our Regeneron winners said, I think, Mr. Chen, farm, not pharmacy. So I got a kick out of that, because, you know, I, I love an alliteration and I love a pun, and he managed to do both. So I'm just gonna say, I'm, I'm proud of him for being a great scientist and also for being very literary. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rogers. Any questions for Dr. Rogers on the board? Ms. Falco?
Yeah, I just got a couple of questions. So for the pre-K, do you think that you'll be able to accommodate? You might not have any idea yet, but do you think you'll be able to accommodate everybody's interest? So do you think there'll be enough spots for everybody who wants a spot?
I'm hopeful. We had enough slots for everyone who wanted a slot last year. The year before that, we had fewer seats allocated, and so we weren't able to serve all of the need. But last year, we were able to serve all the need. Right now, we're projected to have the same number of seats that we had last year. So I'm hopeful that means that we'll be able to serve all the need.
What ha, if there's less, if you've more, if spots go unused, does that affect how many spots you get for the following year? Or no?
This is for us a new program, so we only have the, the two years under our belt. But it did not affect it for this year. And that has not been my observation for other school districts. It is a formula-driven program, and so you are not given the funds. If we don't use all of our seats, they don't pay us for the seats we don't use. But the allocation remains the same.
And just one last question. In terms of budget for next year and the mental health, I know over the last bunch of years, we've been adding extra mental health professionals. Does the additional ones that we have added through this year seem to be enough to cover the mental health needs? I just was wondering if that, how that meshed up?
So it's been your priority and one I share, to get more mental health staffing into schools. And certainly post-pandemic, that's become an even higher priority. So this year, we were able to have a social worker in every school. The year before, half a social worker in every school. We've seen tremendous benefits. The social workers have been able to go from being reactive to being proactive and pulling groups and doing lessons. That has been working well. And I'm not prepared to recommend an increase in staffing from here. I'd like to give this another year and see where it settles out and see if there are any things that we feel the need to shore up. But I've been very encouraged about how thoughtfully the building principals have been using the capacity that they've been given to really get ahead of some of the things that sometimes become problematic in a building, you know, ounce of prevention's worth a pound of care.
Yeah, I know when we sat here last month, the board gave you a lot of signals regarding facilities and sort of next steps. I'm just wondering, because you were asked to basically go get feedback. Just wondering on sort of timing, when we can sort of sit around and talk about that feedback so we can move this ball forward again?
So based on the feedback that you gave us at the last meeting and the feedback that we got from the public, we put together an FAQ, we posted that FAQ to the website. We're still collecting questions in real time and reviewing those. And then we'll, as we develop answers, we'll add them to the FAQ. So we see that as a living document. We shared a lot of the feedback from the board and from the public with the architects, engineers, and the construction managers. We just got back some new cost estimates based on some of that feedback. We have, I anticipate that we're going to meet with them in the next week and a half or so and be able to put something together that we can come to you at the next board meeting. And you can reflect and react to how we've incorporated the public feedback that we've gotten so far.
Ms. Epperson?
Sorry, I'm just gonna piggyback on all of Brian's questions tonight. So to that end, there were some, there were elements of the, of the facilities project that were not optional, so to speak. Not that anything is optional, but are any of those incorporated into the budget? Or we have to still keep that separate, no matter what?
So I'll, I'll let Dr. Ruffo go through what is in the capital part of the budget. But the larger capital projects that we propose doing through the bond, because they're so much larger, they're gonna remain in the bond. But that doesn't mean that this budget is without capital work. So, Dr. Ruffo, can you just maybe go through some of the highlights of the capital work in this budget?
So we have some of the capital work that the larger projects are being done through the transfer-to-capital line. And those included the upgrades to the electrical service at the, at HBT and the high school. We also have the classroom renovations at Southwoods to make more, to make more space and to move some of the business office wing off-site. We have district-wide roofing, electrical, paving, about $4 million, 4.3 million in projects that were part of that BCS that we're planning to do at this, at this time in the transfer-to-capital line. And then there are a variety of smaller projects that are being prioritized in the maintenance budget as well.
Okay, we're all good. Thank you, Dr. Rogers, and thank, thank you, Dr. Ruffo. Okay, there are no legislative items, and moving on to discussion items. Three members from the board have attended the Nassau Bozey's Budget Hearing. Mr. Greco, would you like to give a brief summary?
I don't know if it will be brief. So I, I served with Ms. Koshia and Dr. Park on the Nassau Bozey's Budget Review Committee. There were two review meetings. I think one of them was January 11th, one of them was February 1st. They're in person. Great to spend some time with my colleagues, but at the same time, it's just really nice to not have to do things by Zoom. One of the best parts about being on the Bozey's Budget Review Committee is you actually get a feel for what Bozey's does. And I don't think many people know what Bozey's does. And actually sit in a room and sort of go through the same process we were going through earlier tonight with Nassau Bozey's is pretty invigorating. And I, and I really enjoy it, and I know Dr. Park and Ms. Koshia do as well. But the reason I'm bringing it up tonight is, you know, Nassau Bozey's develops and adopts like 26 or 27 budgets, one for each of its programs. There's, there's budgets for facilities rental, there's budgets for transportation services. But as a board, we have to vote on one of their budgets. It's the Administrative Operations Budget. And we conduct that vote at the April 16th meeting. So this is basically just me, as part of this discussion item, bringing back that information for us to make a decision. So, you know, one of the, I, I think the key points to take away is Nassau Bozey's, like any other organization, and just like the Sasek Central School District, has a lot of inflationary issues and has a lot of ERS and TRS costs. It's, for the Administrative Operations Budget, it's actually half of that budget. So I have some notes, but in that budget, they're increasing it by 7.6%, which is driven primarily from the retiree health and employee fringe benefits. They calculate the increase from health at 9% and retiree benefit cost at 10.6, very similar to what we do. And that's 63% of the entire budget. So putting aside retiree health and the fringe benefits, which it's sort of hard to do because it's a majority of the budget, the other drivers of this budget are the fact that they were in a, they were hiring in '23, '24, but they never filled positions. So now they're going to fill those positions and they're budgeting for those positions, which is a large increase considering the size of this budget. And they also have, you know, major costs of insurance, you know, 7% for workers' comp and 10% for cyber. But I think it was 16, 16% increase on their general liability, which is a somewhat daunting number. So at the end of the day, their budget increases by 7.6, but they're able to use some revenue, in this case, interest revenue, to offset that. So the cost to the constituent districts is only 5.7%. That's the budget we're voting on. As for some of the other budgets that we're not voting on, I'm not gonna go into too much detail. Besides, at these meetings, you hear the word inflation tossed around a lot. You hear a lot about the increase in retiree health and the increase in general liability. I think they were very attuned to those numbers, the same way I think every district is. And none of us are alone to how difficult it can be to put these budgets together. I, I think that's all I'll say right now, Dr. Park. I think you can agree with me to say it's just, it's fascinating to watch them work and to learn about the many programs that Nassau Bozey's offers. Especially, like me, as a stranger to the program and knowing very little about it, and only recently even finding out that the Lisa School in Siaset is a part of Nassau Bozey's. And having had a tour of it and being so impressed by it, I, you know, I'll always want to be on this committee, even if it's just to spend some time with their board. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Greco. And thank you to Mr. Greco, Dr. Park, and Ms. Koshia for representing Siaset at the Bozey's Budget Review. And the, the second piece of our discussion pertains to Nassau Bozey's Board nominations. And Nassau Bozey's has a board of education similar to ours, and three members of their board are up for reelection for a three-year term. Historically, our board has supported nominations for members seeking reelection. This year, Susan Bertram, whom I've known since 2017, and she has served as the Bozey's Board President since 2017. And she has been a tremendous asset, not only to public education in general, but also as the past president of the New York State School Board Association and the Area 11 Director. And I'm aware that some members of our board have had several occasions to meet with them. Would anyone like to share a few words about the, the three candidates? Mr. Greco, please.
So in my, in my three years serving on this committee, I've spent time with all three of them. Susan Bertram, Martin Kay, and Michael Wineck. And, I mean, it's an understatement to say how passionate they are about what they do. So I would recommend nominating all three of them, but I don't think we do that until next month. But I would like to say now, oh, no, we nominate them now and then we vote next month. All right, so let's nominate them now.
All right, thank you. So. I recognize that this is an uncontested election. However, it's important for our board to demonstrate our support. A resolution has been prepared for the nomination, for the nomination, so we'll do that later. Thank you. Okay, now moving on to new business. A items. Is the approval, A1 is the approval of the appointment of staff changes for March 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A2 is the approval of stipends and hourly rates for 2023 and 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A3 is the approval of coaching recommendation for spring 2024. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitan. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A4 is the approval of appointment of interim director of secondary special education. Can I have a, can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? A5 is the ratification of a stipulation of agreement for the summer school teachers. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Levitan, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B1 and B2 can be taken together. They are the approval of the Committee on Special Education and the Committee on Preschool Special Education Recommendations. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Epperson, seconded by Mr. Rotolo. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B3 is the authorization for contracts for federal Part B funds. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Ostrick, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B4 is the approval of, of the resolution for settlement agreement. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Epperson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B5 is the approval of student club charters, 2023, '24. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falco, seconded by Ms. Levitan. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? B6 is the Nassau Bozey's Board nominations. And we are nominating Susan Bertram, Michael Wineck, and Martin Kay. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C items. C1 is the authorization of special education and/or nursing contracts. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? Mr. Greco.
Dr. Rogers, you, you know how much I, or we, like revenue. And it's nice to see such a large number on the first of these two contracts. But I, I, I gotta admit, it's also nice to see being able to do that in a way that is so helpful to children generally. And I appreciate your efforts here.
I would re, I would be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Goldwight for the work that she put into making that possible. And what this does is it allows us to partner with a neighboring school district to share the load of having a class that serves some of our neediest students. So it's a win-win for both districts.
So since I always thank the wrong person, thank you to everyone that helped get this done.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C2 is the authorization for health and welfare contracts. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C3 is the authorization to participate in a joint municipal cooperative bidding program with Eastern Suffolk Bozey's for carpentry services. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Falco, seconded by Ms. Levitan. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C4 is the authorization of service contracts. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Epperson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C5 is the extension of agreement of bid number 53-22.23 rental of tents. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Levitan. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C6 is the authorization to enter into a cooperative with Amnia/City of Taxin for genitorial and sanitation supplies. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Ms. Epperson. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C7 is the acceptance of donation from Regeneron. Are there any que, can I have a motion, please? Mr. Greco, seconded by Ms. Falco. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? C8 is the disposal of broken surplus and/or obsolete equipment, supplies and brooks. Can I have a motion, please? Mr. Rotolo, seconded by Dr. Park. Are there any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Now, moving on to audience to the public. I just wanted to thank everyone for their patience. And since the board has adopted new procedures, I will read the procedures, so please just bear with me. The Siaset Board of Education Administration welcomes attendance at Board of Education meeting. The board, the board business meeting will be livestream and recorded. A link to access the livestream is a A link to access the livestream is available. And the board values community input and provides opportunities to offer that input via email or in person. Persons who wish to speak during Audience to the Public must register online to speak in events of the meeting by five P M. the day of the board meeting. A link to the pre-registration form will be available on homepage on the district website in, uh, one week before the meeting, and a community email has gone out to the community with a link as well. Person, persons wishing to address the board in person during Audience to the Public must conform to procedures adopted by the board. Speakers' remarks must conform to the following rules. Number one, all speakers and observers are required to conduct themselves in a respectful and civil manner in accordance with rules set by the board. Two, speakers must address the board only, not members of the audience or the audience as a whole. Three, speakers must limit their comments to, to issues concerning school district operations, school district affairs, or Board of Education policy. Four, because of rights protected by state and federal law, no speaker may speak about an individual student or staff member, nor will the board administration entertain questions in public regarding collective bargaining, negotiations, personnel matters, student matters, or legal matters. Five, no speaker may speak about decisions involving specific personnel or specific student. If a speaker wishes to address the board concerning specific personnel or specific students, the speaker may write to the board. Six, speakers may not use epithets, slurs, personal abuse, lewd, and obscene speech, profanity, libelous speech, threats, and fighting words or gestures. Any person who violates the rules above will immediately forfeit the balance of their time addressing the Board, the Board of Education. To be recognized to speak, persons must register with their full name and, and address and attest that they will comply with the rules stated above. In addition, only residents of the Sayoset School District are permitted to address the board. Each resident will have four minutes to address the board. The board will not permit polling of board members by speakers. After every resident wishing to speak has, has had an opportunity to do so, the board and or administration may respond to residents' questions or comments. No resident will be permitted to address the board more than once per meeting. No one may record another member of the, of the public in a manner that is disruptive or confrontational. And I just want to inform the audience that if these rules are not followed, or if the audience heckles any speakers, I will first give a warning, and if there's a second breach of the rules, I will end the Audience to the Public portion of the meeting. Furthermore, for tonight's meeting, the Audience to the Public portion will be recorded but not livestreamed. We will release the recording tomorrow after our attorney reviews the content for compliance, and thank you for your understanding. And the first speaker will be Teresa Morelli.
Hi, everybody. Oh, I wanted to say thank you to the board members and the superintendents for being here, especially the volunteers. I just wanted to say in terms of budget, the, um, in light of the fact that the state aid is being cut across the board, you know, it's, it's affecting all Long Island school districts for the most part. I just thought it was, I wanted to mention that the past few years, probably four years, I feel like we should all try to take it as, uh, see the irony of it and the life lesson that can be learned from, um, the compliance with the, the very hard COVID mandates and the mandate even in terms of changing our Braves name. Um, one of the drive, the main drivers of complying was the fact that we would, we were threatened with loss of state aid, and now it's happening anyway. So at one point even, it was asked by the Board of Regents, could we change our name to Brave? And the, it sounded like a unilateral decision was made over there. No, not Brave, even if we remove the imagery. The other question, the other piece I wanted to just mention was, um, it's really kind of a question, um, in terms of security, uh, given the fact that there's sort of a new trend where some Long Island school districts are now either considering and investigating, weighing the options, um, and some are actually implementing for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year, um, armed security patrols. I was wondering if that's something that our district would be, um, willing to look into and possibly even using a new, um, request for proposals, you know, putting out new requests for proposals from security companies so we could at least see what our options are. We have a four million dollar security budget. Um, Half Hollow Hills has a one point five million dollar security budget as of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Um, but, so we spend four million, or we did last year, they spent one point five million, they're adding a million for the armed security patrols. That puts them at two point five million, still far below what we spend per pupil on security. We spend five hundred ninety-six dollars per pupil. They spent, they spent two seventeen. They still only gonna spend in the three hundreds per pupil. Um, so I just thought it's worth mentioning, I don't have a strong feeling pro or against, but I'm leaning more towards pro, given the fact that the world is changing so quickly, and we do so much in terms of safety measures, education with the kids, um, about, um, you know, this whole, the, the topic of active shooters and, um, response. Also, the fact that even in meetings like this, we're all protected sometimes by the, the police, Nassau County Police, who are armed when we have unarmed security. And so many of our wonderful security are retired NYPD or retired Nassau County. So I just think it's worth exploring, bringing it up. We have the budget in there already, maybe we just need to, no offense to Wisdom Security, maybe we need to look into other, others as well and get requests for proposal out there. I know Half Hollow Hills is using, I think covert security is from the articles that I'm reading. So just wanted to put it out there and thank you for your time and thank you for everything you do.
The second speaker will be Karen Ostrick and Ina Choi.
Good evening. Uh, Dr. Rogers, Administration, Board of Trustees, thank you so much for all that you do. My name is Karen Ostrick, and I'm a PTA co-president at Walt Whitman Elementary School and speaking on behalf of our PTA. I'm here tonight with Ina Choi as well, um, to highlight three main points for you. Number one, the current condition of the Walt Whitman Elementary School is a health and safety concern for the students. The highest priority of spending the school board has outlined for its facilities project. Number two, the idea that the bubble at Walt Whitman is going to reverse and the population is going to drop to where it used to be is based on faulty assumptions. And number three, the student population at the Walt Whitman is as big or bigger than any, than the other elementary schools in the district, but the footprint of the building is the smallest. Adding one classroom will not bring the building up to par and keeps Walt Whitman as a non-functional space for our children. In two thousand and fifteen, I believe we had about two hundred and fifty students then. Today, we're at four hundred and one, forty percent higher. The district's own projections, which Walt Whitman is already running ahead of for enrollment and is estimated to fall out of the bubble territory in the next few years, we think this belief is false. While we no longer hold the title as the smallest student population among the Sayoset elementary schools, our building size does remain the smallest. We now have as many or more students than most of the other elementary schools. Our students, therefore, are left to crowd into the smallest building, which has had a number of negative consequences for them, some of which are dangerous in our opinion. When you drive up to the circle in front of our school, the first thing you see facing the parking lot is an inviting wall of glass windows where students in the cafeteria congregate for lunch. It is a long row of windows without pylons, and anyone who wants to do harm to our building would be drawn there. No one has to even enter the building to inflict damage and endanger a large group of unsuspecting kids. Our children are not safe in this space. In addition, the cafeteria is almost unusably small, only slightly bigger than our kindergarten classrooms. The cafeteria currently serves lunch to children for approximately three hours of the school day because only one grade at a time can fit in it. It used to be an hour and a half. Addressing the cafeteria in Walt Whitman is not a function of a nice-to-have, it's a need-to-have, on par with other health and safety issues in the district. The original plan presented by Dr. Rogers to convert the space into classrooms and move the cafeteria to our interior gymnasium would alleviate the space and safety concerns simultaneously. Even though our gym is small, it is still big enough to accommodate lunch, but just like the other parts of the building, the permanent growth in population has created an environment where the footprint of the school, as the smallest in the district, no longer makes sense. In addition, there is another safety concern with the gym. It is currently used for elections, and because it's interior and unsecured, we have to close the school on election days because we can't ensure the safety of the kids without doing so. Not only is the gym too small to be functional for its original purpose, given the new population, it is also woefully outdated and cannot be secured. We can only assume that this is precisely why Dr. Rogers proposed constructing a new exterior gym to the building so that the security risk, the security risk would be alleviated. We urge the board to go back to the original plan presented for Walt Whitman in August and incorporate that into the final facilities project list. The plan addressed the health and safety risks for the cafeteria and the gym and correctly recognized that the population of the school does not fit and was unlikely to ever drop back to where it has been before. Parents at Whitman were encouraged to see the first plan that looked to address these risks. The requests are a health and safety issue. It is not a nice-to-have, it is a necessity. It is not a matter of things being uncomfortable. We are in the range, we are in the range of dysfunction. We are not able to educate our kids and keep our kids safe equally to the other schools. Thank you.
Hello, Dr. Rogers, Administration, Board of Trustees, thank you for all you do. My name is Ina Choi, and I'm a Walt Whitman PTA co-president. Much of the board's discussion has revolved around the belief that our student population will drop back down after the bubble. We're here to show we are not nearing it soon, and we are at a new normal. Kindergarten enrollment as of today is markedly higher than it was at this point in March in previous years. Please also keep in mind Whitman is the only elementary school that is seeing a growth in new construction development sewn to the building with the three Kensington and seventy-seven Sagamore townhouses, which will all be three to four-bedroom homes. They are not age fifty-five-plus communities. These homes have not be, have not finished building yet, but will soon. The January twenty-third Superintendent's Report showed enrollment projections at an additional five students at Whitman between, um, the twenty-two, the two thousand twenty-two and twenty-four school years. We already beat the projections, having gained fourteen students and show no signs of slowing. We know these enrollment projections, based on kindergarten classes, are subject to error. Please do not put undue weight on statistics we know are unreliable. Yes, there is an urgency for work to be done at the high school and Southwoods. It is likewise an urgency at this elementary school now. Whitman is small. It's about ten thousand square feet less or twenty percent less than other Sayoset elementary schools with similar student populations. If an average classroom is about eight hundred square feet, it can be said we are lacking twelve classrooms that other schools already have. We have the tightest square footage per student. But all our Sayoset elementary schools need work, and it will become urgent for other elementary schools in the district as their peaks return. I remember listening to parents come up to the podium over the years because their child was in the classroom with over twenty-five students and had to eat at their desks because of a lack of cafeteria space, and this was not during COVID. Whitman was not alone going through a period of time where we had music on a card, had OT and PT on the stage, or had two or three different services working at different corners of a room. The facilities do not fit what we need, and merely replacing portable classrooms with permanent ones will not alleviate the lack of space. Please note again, we should expect the peaks to return sooner than reports have shown. As we all know, antecdotally around us, families with grown children do not tend to stay in Sayoset well into their retirement years anymore. Why are we not building to accommodate our students when we know these peaks will come? But to the point tonight, Whitman will not be dipping down to the two hundred thirties or even three hundred thirties in any foreseeable future. It is stubbornly on the rise. It is rising every year, and even within this year, we gained three students mid-year this year, and this keeps happening. We are at a new norm. The new plateau will not be at the three thirties, but substantially higher. It is our sincere request, while the district is proposing facilities work, it should be designed in the most responsible way, in a way to maximize value by doing the work when we are already working in the building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tanya Getz. Tanya Getz, not here, right? Okay. All right, the next person will be Parisa Osmanovic.
Good evening, members of the Board and Administration. I'm Parisa Osmanovic. I reside at thirty-nine Irving Drive. I think I have to say all that stuff, right? I'm a parent in Sayoset. I'm gonna squeeze my four minutes to address your intentions to adopt more heuristic approaches to learning over algorithmic learning and then to viewpoint neutrality. I'd like to know whether the board or the administration is responsible for keeping the International Baccalaureate, or IB, degree out of Sayoset. IB offers a holistic global approach to learning that articulates concepts vertically and in, in, in an interdisciplinary manner. It culminates in a theory of knowledge course in high school that can only be described as heuristic. International Baccalaureate solves for so many of the issues you described with algorithmic pedagogical approaches, and yet you're not pursuing it, but you invested time and resources into micro-credentials for data analysis, i.e. to showcase soon-to-be obsolete algorithmic skill sets. Why? This choice, this choice concerns me as an educator and as a parent. It concerns me as much as the Board and Administration's demonstrations of so-called viewpoint neutrality. When our administration sends district-wide emails concerning acts of hate towards one group and never towards others, and only enacts disciplinary action, including calling the police on children of color, are they exercising viewpoint neutrality? When a white rabbi and pastor were appointed the co-chairs of an anti-bias task force with no representation for Muslim, Hindu, Sikh, Buddhist, indigenous, black, brown, or other communities of color, was this board or administration interested in viewpoint neutrality? When a body was put together with voluntary community members without any experience or credentials in the social sciences, diversity, equity, and inclusion, or culturally responsive teaching and social emotional learning, was viewpoint neutrality considered? On December fourth, I attended a meeting of this Board of Education that was recorded and livestreamed and immediately scrubbed off the internet after our community members were verbally threatened and assaulted here. This administration did nothing, and I know this because I was here. Instead of this board or administration doing something to keep the members of our community that are attending our Board of Ed meetings safe from actual threats of violence, you are now preventing us from recording them. Our meetings are public documents, timestamps that allow our children and community members to refer back to what happens here. You not only enabled and allowed that December meeting to escalate into an unsafe environment for the Muslim attendees, you erased it and acted like it never happened. You are having an attorney scrub footage moving forward. Is that viewpoint neutrality? This board and administration is very aware of the acts of hate taking place in your schools towards children of color. Your own students have stood here and recounted them to you, and yet you're not taking any measures to maintain a safer, neutral environment. All of your faculty is white, and all of your curriculum is Eurocentric and Eurodescended. How is that a neutral viewpoint? When your holiday boutiques are taking place around Judeo-Christian holidays in every one of our schools, and everyone else is told they can't talk about Diwali or Ramadan, how is that a neutral viewpoint? When our community updates didn't mention any curriculum around Indigenous Peoples' Day or Haitian Independence When our community updates didn't mention any curriculum around Indigenous Peoples' Day or Haitian Independence Day, I emailed all of you multiple times throughout February to see, when are you going to address Black History Month? And Dr. Rogers didn't follow up until March. Is that a neutral viewpoint? Our board lacks representation, our administration lacks representation, our entire district's hiring practices lack representation, and the only people feeling the repercussions of that are the students that are underrepresented and unrepresented. I hope every parent of a child that does not benefit from the status quo of erasure and indifference finds their voice and doesn't just accept things, quote-unquote, "the way things are" in our schools. Things can change. We can build community in Saïssat that reflects every family and appreciates every child here, even if the board or administration do not. Thank you.
The next speaker will be Ibrahim Khajra.
Ramadan Mubarak. Muslim students and parents have no way of being heard by this board and this administration besides this monthly forum where we get to speak four minutes. And what does the president of the board do? She relegates the duty of creating rules to an attorney who has crafted them to silence Muslims. The purely discretionary nature of the rules give unprecedented power to a board president that inevitably prevents Muslim parents from expressing their true feelings for fear that they'll be censored and banned. Let's not forget the endemic and persistent Islamophobia in Saïssat. We're here to improve the schools. My criticism is not against you necessarily, it's to improve its constructive criticism. We have already discussed how there's not one, not one Muslim teacher in any of the nine schools here in Saïssat. There's not one Muslim guidance counselor, nor nurse, nor any other full-time staff member. What we do have are Israeli flags throughout the elementary, middle, and high schools to remind our students where their faculties allegiances lie. Back in October, Dr. Rogers sent out multiple emails when twelve hundred Jews died. How many emails have we received now that thirty-one thousand two hundred innocent Muslims have died? More than fifteen thousand children, double our district's population, have been slaughtered. I recall emails about Ukraine and yet there's nothing about Palestine. If Saïssat does not have an Islamophobia problem, then why have our actions thus far pointed in that direction? How many meetings has this Saïssat administration had with Muslim parents since October? I know many members of our community have tried and tried to connect and been met with silence. Silence, no responses to emails, besides one maybe, when I was trying to email someone about appointing someone to the anti-bias task force. And by the way, we haven't heard a peep about Mufti Farhan. At least as far as last week goes, I don't know if anything happened in the last few days. Should we have to file a FOIA request for a breakdown of suspensions by ethnicity or faith? How many non-white students have been suspended since October? As far as I know, from the Muslim parents that I've talked to, only Muslim students have been suspended. Beware that if you're a Muslim or Asian student in Saïssat, suspension is almost guaranteed if you stand up for Palestinian rights here in Saïssat. Suspensions are not just doled out by the superintendent. The attorney the school has been working with encourages and defends each and every one of these unwarranted suspensions. With over fifty percent of our population being non-white, that puts the majority of our students at higher risk of disciplinary action. Perhaps it is time to assess the qualifications of the school district attorney and whether he should retain the privilege of representing Saïssat when he doesn't represent the majority of our district. Moreover, as you know, two billion Muslims around the world, including here in Saïssat, are celebrating the holy month of Ramadan. When the Holocaust Remembrance Month came around, we received at least four emails, maybe more, mentioning it and describing what the school was doing to ensure students are taught about the Holocaust. That's fine, I'm not saying that we shouldn't. We haven't received one mention of Ramadan in a district-wide email. And as far as I know, no school-wide lessons or district-wide lessons about Ramadan are being taught to any of the students in any of the schools. The Saïssat Muslim community is ready to engage with the administration. But this administration has ignored and delegated any response to an attorney who is not elected and has no interest in thinking or representing the Muslim students or Muslim population of this district. Thank you for setting an excellent example of equal treatment of all Saïssat residents to the student population.
This closes the audience to the public. I just want to make a comment that the district, both the board and administration, have taken the safety of our staff and students. That's our top priority. It has always been the top priority in the past and going forward, so I just wanted to reiterate that. And with that, Dr. Rogers, would you like to address some of the comments?
Sure, I'll try to address things in the order in which they came. Ms. Morelli, thank you for your comments. It was great seeing you at the play Friday night. The... We don't know what's going to happen with the state aid cuts, I think I addressed that earlier. In terms of security, after Parkland, the district made a number of changes. We did have a community committee to talk about security at that time and the muscular approach that we decided on at that time was to go with the upgraded doors that are in all of the buildings. Longtime watchers of these meetings know that I'm reluctant to talk about the security measures that we have taken because the more I talk about them, the more I assist someone who might be surveilling us and trying to make a plan. What I will say is the advantage of the approach that we decided to take is that the doors are everywhere and the doors can be operated instantaneously. The high school is a quarter mile from one side to another, so no matter how capable the individual is of engaging a suspect, that individual will be limited by the speed at which they can travel across the large building. The advantage of the doors is that they can be operated electronically simultaneously and that everyone behind one of those doors is in a safe place. So we do meet regularly with Nassau County Police Commissioner. He sets up forums for school district superintendents and we talk about tactics and priorities and investments. And then they also set up trainings for building principals around incident management. So this is something that we take very seriously. Our two director and assistant director of security here are with Covert Investigations. They are the company that manages all of our security force, whether they're on staff or contracted. And we stay very close to them in terms of their recommendations. So I would say that it's something that we're constantly thinking about, but I also know that we have, in our approach with the doors, what was an expensive but also incredibly muscular approach to keeping all of our students and staff safe. In terms of the facilities approach... Mr. Rotolo is reminding me that the Homeland Security Office also assigns an officer to every one of the school districts for the purposes of doing site reviews of all of our sites. So I'm proud to say that we get compliments for the work that we've done here to harden our infrastructure. And again, without going into detail on some of the things that they have complimented us for, when they have made recommendations, we've incorporated those recommendations immediately into our security planning and we're very complimentary of them and very appreciative of the time and effort that they take with us. And what happens during any incident, whether the incident affects us, you know, we've had a couple of lockout situations this year already. Our security directors are in immediate communication with Homeland Security so we have a better understanding of the nature of the threat and so we can calibrate our response accordingly. And then just last point on this. My philosophy on how we implement security is to be more muscular at first until we have a good sense of what the situation is and then we can relax the layers that we put into place as we feel confident that that is a safe thing to do. So we try to get that calibration right. And until we're certain we know what we're dealing with, we tend to take the most protective posture we need to. In terms of the facilities work, the board is... I won't speak for the board, but the board is in a listening phase right now for community feedback. We've put out an initial proposal, a draft proposal to the community. We got a lot of electronic feedback from the community. The board is taking in the feedback that they're hearing tonight electronically and will continue to do so. And then ultimately, from a process perspective, we will propose to the board a final project that we believe illustrates all of the board's priorities and hopefully the board will be able to adopt that and then we'll put it in front of the public. And if the public supports it, then we'll adopt it. So I don't know what the final contours of that plan will be, that really is the decision of the board, but we will continue to provide the board with our best thinking about how to address all of the needs in the district and to do it quickly. My one point would be that, to the extent that there is rooms at the front of the building that have windows, rooms on the side of the building that have windows, all of our buildings have lots of windows and lots of doors. So no matter where they're located, that's a truism for all of the buildings. So it doesn't mean we're inattentive to it, but it does mean that it's the kind of thing that's not... I think it would be very difficult for us to come up with a rule that says what windows are good and what windows are bad. In terms of the enrollment bubble, obviously, we had projections prior to the pandemic that were rendered obsolete by the pandemic. Then we had projections that we did after the pandemic. Typically, what happens when there's a demographic turnover in a neighborhood is that the homes are occupied by a new generation of parents with younger kids. Those kids will age into middle school, obviously, and... But the house will not turn over to a new group of elementary students. So what we've seen is that enrollment tends to be cyclical. There is a bubble and then those kids age into middle and high school. The house remains unavailable for new elementary families until at some point the kids graduate and the house turns over. What is somewhat different about the Whitman area is the presence of new development there. So far, those new developments have not generated enrollment, which is what the enrollment consultant predicted. But you've heard me say at previous meetings that tastes may change and at some point, ten years from now, more, those may seem to be more attractive properties for people with families than they appear to be right now. So that's, you know, certainly something I'm attentive to and that I've mentioned to the board in the past. And I agree with the premise that enrollment projections can be volatile and unpredictable. There's no good solution for that, but we watch our enrollment closely. We also monitor home sales to see if we can discern any trends. And we do monitor live births in Saïssat. The challenge for Saïssat is that live births are not the biggest driver of our enrollment. In migration into the district is the bigger driver of our enrollment. So that makes it doubly difficult to predict. So Ms. Osmanovic, I appreciate the discourse on heuristic and algorithmic thinking and I find that stimulating to talk about. So the International Baccalaureate program I'm familiar with and I agree with your analysis of the holistic approach that it has, the theory of knowledge course that it concludes with. This district has made a large investment, professional development, materials, et cetera, in the IB program. That is where our investment has been. The International Baccalaureate program is an expensive program to participate in. There are lots of things that I find favorable about it. So I think the question for us is kind of a build-by decision. Is it better for us to start building more heuristic work here or to buy it by taking advantage of a pre-existing program somewhere else, knowing that it will require us to tool up for a new approach? That's a... That's a meaty question to work into and something that we are talking about at the elementary level in terms of how to approach our teaching of interdisciplinary subjects. And certainly it would be a dramatic change to work with the IB at the high school, but the districts that are using IB are very enthusiastic about it. So I think more to come in terms of thinking about what the best approach is there. I won't go point by point through the rest of your comments, but I will address the live streaming and the challenges that we've had with live streaming. We tried to make this clear in the communications that we had about the December meeting. Whether these are public records of the meeting or not, the district cannot violate federal laws. So the district can't be a platform through which federal laws are violated by people who use the resources that are here. So the district is stuck with the challenge. The challenge is balancing our desire to be transparent with the public against our need to comply with federal laws. So we do consult our attorneys and we do take their advice because their advice, they understand the law better than we do. We all recognize the challenge that's presented. But in the end, where viewpoint neutrality comes into that conversation is if we pick and choose which parts of the meeting not to show, then we will be exercising viewpoint neutrality. And so instead, to avoid FERPA violations and avoid violating viewpoint neutrality, the decision was made not to show any of it. And then I do think that that's unfortunate. But I think the board has implemented, I think, muscular changes to how it engages with the public that are intended to keep the conversation civil and focused on school district matters. And certainly I'll let the board address the points about the rules that they've created, but I think what I've observed is that it's not that the board has not been paying attention, but quite the opposite. The board has made a couple of iterations to try and keep this a forum where the public's comments are welcomed. I welcome the critique and criticism, our critics often make us better. So, you know, that's my observation in terms of where we're at with streaming the meetings. Mr. Khajra, Ramadan Mubarak to you as well. I would say I disagree with a lot of your premises, but I'm not going to talk about student discipline. And the challenge with student discipline is again FERPA. So what I have to avoid doing is responding point by point because in doing so, I may inadvertently violate FERPA. But what I would say is the school's attorney took a night off and spent time here explaining how the rules are followed and how they are enforced in great detail. That conversation was archived and I welcome you to look at it. I do know that you've had the opportunity to meet with several members of my administration. Of course, those comments and thoughts are shared with me. I would also just say that I'm happy to hear criticism that we could be doing more and we're, I think, as a school district, trying hard to appreciate and reflect the diversity that is in this community. And I would say with respect to our Muslim families in particular, since I've come to Saïssat, it's close to ten years now, we've taken a number of muscular steps to, I think, make our Muslim families' experience here a more enjoyable and easier opportunity in the district. So for example, we are, as I'm sure you already know, the first district on Long Island to adopt both Eid al Adha, Eid al Fitr, Diwali, and Lunar New Year as holidays. That was something that we were proud of. The board president at the time was recognized by ICLI with an award. I met with one of our parents who expressed some concerns about how his son's attendance at Friday prayers would be recorded from an attendance perspective. We were able to work on a way of making sure that there was no negative impact for that attendance. Over time, we've given our staff information about what to expect from students who are fasting during the month of given our staff information about what to expect from students who are fasting during the month of Ramadan because as an athlete, if you haven't had anything to drink or eat all day, the coaches should be aware that performance may be a little bit different. Students may be tired. Students may have difficulty paying attention in class. And we wanted to educate our staff so that they wouldn't misinterpret those cues from students as anything other than them following a sacred obligation to try and observe their fast. We've had students approach us because they were looking for places where they could prayer, do prayer during the month of Ramadan, and the building principals have worked carefully with them to identify places where they could go. Some students felt uncomfortable during their lunch periods going into the cafeteria during Ramadan because it's hard to sit around other people who are eating when you're trying to observe your fast. And again, when those requests have been made, we've tried to accommodate them. And a student-led initiative at the high school that I was proud of was the addition of vegan halal and kosher foods. One of the things that we noticed as we were watching the usage of those options was that there was a little surge at the beginning of the year and it dropped off over time. And so two hypotheses emerged from that observation. One is that maybe we had overestimated the market for that, and the other is that maybe we had overestimated how appealing the food was. So we've talked to the students about the food. We just finished surveying students about the food. And I went and sampled the halal food last year and found it appealing myself. So we also understand that there is more interest in the middle and elementary school levels from having spoken to our parents. And so what we're trying to do now with our food service company is identify a way that we can do halal, kosher, vegan meals at scale and still satellite them to the elementary schools. Reason why that's a challenge is because the elementary schools don't have kitchens, so all of the food has to be prepared at the middle school or the high school and then trucked to the elementary school. So we're in the process right now of doing a new food service bid. This is going to be one of the specifications in the bid that we anticipate the bidders to find a way to accommodate. Within the current contract, we've still tried to find a way to do this, but this will be part of the bid specification going forward. So always possible to say that the district could be doing more, that we could be better educated, that we could talk about more things more frequently in different ways. Open to all of those suggestions and thoughts. And I just thought it would be useful to talk through some of the things that the district has done over time to try and serve well our Muslim families. And I thank you for taking the time to hear me out.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rogers. I just wanna make a comment that, like Theresa Morelli said, that we're all volunteers sitting up here. And we are community members. We care about our community. We care about our kids. And being a Board member here, having the... We value the community's input. That's why we have the audience to the public. However, that is totally optional. It's not required by the law to have audience to the public, but we do want to open that channel to the community. So this way, community members would have different ways to address the Board. And if at any time you don't, you feel that you can't address the Board doing the audience to public, you are more than welcome to send us emails. And but we really value your inputs, and we are constantly making changes, modifications, to serve our community and to make this a better community. So with that, I don't know if anyone wants to say anything. If not, meeting adjourned. Thank you, Dr. Rogers.
Thank you.